Chairman, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm councillor Michael Brooks. Welcome to this afternoon's virtual online meeting of Lincolnshire County Council. Nigel West, Head of Democratic Services, will ask councillors to confirm their presence at the meeting. Councillors' names will be read out alphabetically. Councillors are requested to respond by unmuting their microphones only and saying 'present'. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Adams.
Present.
Councillor Aaron.
Present.
Councillor Ashton. Councillor Austin.
Present.
Councillor Bowles.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Bradwell.
Present.
Councillor Brailsford.
Present.
Councillor Brewis.
Present.
Councillor Bridges.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Brockway.
Present.
Councillor Brooks.
Present.
Councillor Corey.
Present.
Councillor Clark.
Present.
Councillor Cooper. Councillor Coopland.
Present.
Councillor Cullen. Councillor Davies.
Present.
Councillor Dobson.
Present.
Councillor Fido. Councillor Fleetwood.
Present.
Councillor Folkes.
Present.
Councillor Griggs. Councillor Grokoc.
Present.
Councillor Hayes.
Present.
Councillor Hill.
Present.
Councillor Kendrick.
Present.
Councillor Key.
Present.
Councillor... Councillor Killie.
Present.
Councillor Kirk. Councillor Macy. Councillor Marfleet.
Present.
Councillor Matthews.
Present.
Councillor McNally.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Newton.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Overton. Councillor Oxbey. Councillor Parker.
Present.
Councillor Parkin.
Present.
Councillor Pepper.
Present.
Councillor Perrott and Williams.
Present.
Councillor Poole.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Rawlins.
Present.
Councillor Christopher Reed.
Present.
Councillor Robert Reed.
Present.
Councillor Renshaw.
Present.
Councillor Rowe.
Present.
Councillor Skinner. Councillor Mrs Sneath.
Present.
Councillor Spencer. Councillor Spratt. Councillor Stokes.
Present.
Councillor Storer.
Present.
Councillor Strangle.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Talbot.
Present.
Councillor Thompson.
Present.
Councillor Trollope Lou. Councillor Whittington.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Woolley.
Present.
Councillor Linda Wotton. Councillor Ray Wotton. Councillor Young.
Present.
Are there any names that I read out where people weren't able to respond?
Nigel, I think the Wottons were there earlier because I saw their picture, but they're in the garden.
We're here. We did say present. Okay, thank you. So councillor Ray Wotton, present. Councillor Linda Wotton, present. Thank you.
Okay then, thank you. We'll move on then to the apologies for absence. Can I ask Nigel West to announce any apologies? Thank you, Nigel.
Chairman, I believe the leader has his hand raised.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you. Thank you, I just couldn't get... Thank you, Chairman, I didn't mean to raise it, just to say that councillors Davy and councillor Worth are both at another council meeting at the moment, so they both send their apologies.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Mr West, Chairman, I have two further apologies if I may, from councillor Spratt and councillor Morn.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, I can read apologies then, Chairman.
Are there any other apologies following that? Any other apologies? Anyone in Scott?
Yes, I'd like to put forward Graham Cullen's apologies.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Parker.
Chairman, I also have apologies from councillor Mrs Bocket, councillor Cook, councillor Lawton, councillor Buteroid, and councillor Turner said he would be late, and the leader's already mentioned councillor Davy and Worth, and councillor Spratt. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Right, on to item two on the agenda then, declarations of councillors' interests. Councillors should indicate if they have an interest they would like to declare by typing 'speak' in the chat function. I would like to remind members of the advice circulated from the Monitoring Officer on Friday regarding those members that also sit on district council, and that there is no need to declare an interest. Any declarations of interests?
I believe councillor Rowe has asked to speak.
Yes, councillor Rowe.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I need to expand on a declaration of interest in that I'm a director of a company that has two tenants who have cafes, one in Lincoln and one somewhere else, so I won't take any part in the discussion or the voting for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rowe. Thank you for that. Are there any other declarations of interest? No, it doesn't appear so, so thank you for that. We'll move on then to item three on the agenda, which is pavement licences, acceptance of delegation of district council functions. And this is a report by the executive director place which has been circulated. Do I have a proposal? Councillor Richard Davies?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It gives me great pleasure to propose this motion, and thank you, members, for coming together this afternoon in this extraordinary meeting to listen to this proposal. I'll very quickly outline the reasons for it, excepting that I'm sure you've read the paper in detail. There's no surprise or shock to say that trading is a good idea in the public realm, on streets and pavements where possible, it's good that businesses are in our communities. Notwithstanding Covid, it would be good, but in particular, in light of Covid and the changes, and particularly suggestions coming out of surveys last week, that since the application of face masks has become mandatory in shops, that there has been a significant downturn in footfall across the retail environment, and that is a concern. Now, it's no underestimation to suggest this act hasn't been brought around in the most efficient way, which will come as not a great deal of surprise to anybody who's spent any time looking at the way that Parliament works at times. However, the ambition is laudable, and that in simple terms is to make the application for cafe pavement licences far quicker, to reduce it from the many-month process it was in the past through to a very quick kind of 14-day turnaround. That has meant that there is going to be a massive reduction in the amount of consultation, and the immortal phrase, 'there is a presumption in favour', is being brought into proceedings. And really, that means unless we get our skates on, this could end up happening in a slightly uncontrolled and ill-mannered way. That said, any licences granted using this new process would be in place till September next year. However, they can be revoked if we and colleagues feel that they aren't being handled and delivered correctly, but also, any alcohol licences would have to be applied for in the usual way. I would also say that this doesn't affect any of our statutory powers under the 1980s Highways Act. We can still use the old approach to grant cafe licences as a highways authority. How, bearing in mind this new process is far more streamlined, I think it's fair to say that where possible, businesses would like to follow this approach. Now, what this new power does is places an onus on district councils to process any applications coming in via this more streamlined approach. And it will come as no surprise, in particular to dual hats, as I'm sure, when I say that a number of district councils have approached us with significant concerns about the handling of this, primarily around resources. I believe Nottingham City Council last week were processing themselves kind of 20 or 30 applications a day, and it's fair to say that most of the district councils in Lincolnshire are not geared up to deal with this kind of level of application or detail. Now, obviously, we are already doing and have done it for many years and have kind of facilities in place to handle it. So really, what we're seeking to do is to facilitate district councils to delegate to us to make the decision and process the paperwork and do the very limited consultation on their behalf. As you'll see from the paper, I think five or six of the DCs within Lincolnshire have already asked us to undertake this. However, we are keeping the wording of the motion open in that anybody, the other two that haven't yet come forward, if they did want to join the scheme, are more than welcome to. And I think, just in kind of final commentary, it goes without saying that we would look to speak to the local county council of the area to get their view, to ensure that any local issues, concerns and stipulations are taken care of as part of the application process. So, in broad, simple terms, what we're saying is we'd like to carry on what we've always done, but do it a bit quicker and better. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you for that, councillor Davies. And have you moved the recommendations that the council, et cetera?
Yes, I've moved that the council approves the exercise by the council on the pavement licensing function contained in Part One of the Business and Planning Act 2020, if and to the extent that they are delegated to the county council by any of the district councils in Lincolnshire.
Sorry, sorry. And also, the council delegates the executive director of place the authority to take all decisions necessary to fulfil the said functions, including determination of applications for pavement licences.
My apologies, Mr Chairman, I neglected paragraph two. Yes.
Have I a second for that, I believe, councillor?
Yes, I think you did say my name. The signal seems quite bad, Chairman, but I would like to second the proposal. I won't read them out if you don't mind. I think councillors have done that. Just to say, it would seem a very sensible way forward. The complication was that the legislation has sort of changed midstream, but I fully support councillor Davies's proposal, which I think, well, pragmatically done, will actually enable businesses which are struggling to help them become more viable. But at the same time, there are safeguards in place to make sure that if there are issues of blocking the pavement, it can be dealt with. So I think that's why the meeting was called, and nothing further to add. Thank you, Chairman. I second the motion.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Right, I've got people, several members, that have got their hands raised. If I could just, I will call those out now to speak, but if I could just remind members, we ask you to type 'speak' in the chat box if you wish to speak, rather than raise your hand, and that makes it easier for us to deal with. But councillor Brewis, you've got your hand raised. Do you wish to speak?
Yeah, very grateful, Chairman, to say that I personally, I thank both councillor Davies and councillor Hill. I welcome this. I also think it makes sense and it will speed it up, because being the highway authority is sensible, that we can probably deal with such things as risk assessments and so on more effectively. And I, for one, welcome this wholeheartedly. That was all I wanted to say, Chairman. Thank you, and I definitely support it.
Thank you, councillor Brewis. I've got councillor Alison Austin, who's with a raised hand. Councillor Alison Austin, would you wish to speak?
Thank you, Chairman. I didn't find the chat box, sorry, so I raised my hand. I know that Boston Borough Council isn't one who's yet mentioned, referred to, but I hope this is perhaps just because we haven't yet had our council meeting, which is in a week's time. At the risk of being, you know, prejudicing my voting there, I think this is eminently sensible. In the circumstances, we want to get trading as boosted as quickly as we can, and also, we want to be making the most of the best weather. I hope we haven't missed it already, but this seems very, very good. To my point of view, it's cutting out unnecessary bureaucracy, so I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Austin. I now move on to councillor Christine Talbot. Do you wish to speak, councillor Talbot?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It's a question first. I fully support the actions that are being taken today, but I have one or two queries, and I will use an example of Guildhall Street, where, I don't know if I'm allowed to name the coffee shop, but I will do, although there are other coffee shops available throughout the county. Outside Cafe Aroma, there is a strict time as to when they can put the tables and the screenings out, bearing in mind that has got vehicular access both up the high street and along Guildhall Street. So in assessing the risk, will whoever is looking at the applications for street furniture to be placed outside cafes and restaurants, similarly with Castle Square, will there be a time restriction where there happens to be delivery lorries bringing goods to the other services in that area?
Do you wish to answer that question, councillor Davies?
Very happy to. Yes, the usual process that we followed to date will be used in terms of looking at local conditions with the pavements timings, to ensure that the licences that are granted don't block or prohibit the use of the highway in the normal way. And again, as councillor Hill has suggested, you know, we'll try and apply the usual levels of common sense to things. Again, this highlights where local input from local councillors will be key to making this a success.
Thank you, councillor Davies.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Davies, and thank you, councillor Talbot. Thank you. I have councillor Key now indicating with a hand to speak. Do you wish to speak, councillor Key?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. It's just a one about, you know, how much street furniture and that are they going to be able to put out and where? Because we've got a main road that runs through Gainesville, and we just had a hotel built lately, and I know there was talk of, you know, being the tables and that on that main road. Well, I think that's a bit risky with people rubbernecking, as they call it, as they're going past, when people are digging it. So who makes these decisions to, you know, what they can have it and how far out? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davies, do you want to just come in there?
Yes, in terms of the decision made by the executive director, but I think the usual approach we will apply is common sense. I have to say, I don't think we should be afraid, if it's safe to do so, to place street furniture on pavements on high streets, providing the sufficient gap for people with pushchairs and limited mobility to get round. I think that's okay. But again, it will be done on a case-by-case basis, councillor, and I can assure you, we'd look to you for a bit of a steer on what your particular views were.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Thank you. Is that okay, councillor Key? Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Right, councillor Hugo Marfleet, you're indicated with hand.
Good afternoon, Chairman, thank you. Yes, I completely welcome this, as Richard has just said, as long as there is space for access. But the whole sort of outdoor theme right now is crucial for some of these businesses, for them to exist and to carry on. And I think as we sort of try and build confidence back in the public, some people just want to sit outside at this stage and do not want to go in and do want to visit premises. And where I've been, outdoor premises are winning hands down at the minute and are the best way and solution. I'm always a big fan of this cafe culture on the streets. I think in Europe it works incredibly well, and on a nice day, there's nothing better than sitting outside and looking at, say, the wonderful sights of Boston. So thank you very much, Chairman, and fully support it.
Thank you, councillor Marfleet. Councillor Ray Wotton, you're indicating in the chat box. I'm sorry, I'm trying to flip between the chat and the hands, and I probably missed you a little bit earlier, councillor Wotton. Councillor Wotton.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. Mr Chairman, I fully support these proposals. We're sitting out at the moment on holiday, surrounded by packed tables, people drinking, enjoying themselves. What my concern is, though, is in Grantham, where the pavements are narrow, and that the fact that visually impaired, blind and mobility scooters may not get by. Now, under Highways Act Section 137, a double buggy must be able to get by. And what's new, Mr Chairman, who is going to enforce these rules? Thank you.
Again, come back to councillor Davies on that. I think it is the highways officers that are inspecting and adjudicating the application. Is it councillor Davies?
You correct, Mr Chairman. As in my introduction, I said that the licences can be revoked, and occasionally this doesn't happen already, or does happen already, you kind of get what you might call pavement cafe spread, and they start off keeping the 1.2 metre gap or whatever we've agreed in place, as councillor Wotton's alluded to, and it spreads, and it will be highways officers who will be inspecting. And I have to say, I think we'll be making it clear to applicants that if we get complaints that are founded, well-founded by members of the public or disability groups, then we will take a very dim view of it, and unfortunately, we will be forced to revoke licences. But I agree that there are narrow pavements in place, but as councillor, as Hugo has alluded to, lots of places in Europe with very narrow streets, this works and it works well, so there's no reason it can't work here.
Thank you, councillor Davies, and thank you, councillor Wotton. Councillor Nigel Pepper is indicating in the chat box to speak. Councillor Pepper?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I fully support it, it isn't a problem at all, but just if we had a scenario of a visually impaired person walking their daily route, and on day one, they walk into this and injure themselves, presumably that's covered by the outlet's public liability insurance. I just want to make sure we're not implicated in any way, shape or form by granting the licence. Thank you.
Councillor Davies, do you want to, can you confirm that we're covered there?
One of the requirements is for anybody wishing to take out a cafe licence has sufficient public indemnity insurance in place, so absolutely.
Thank you. I don't have anybody else indicating to speak or with raised hands, I don't think. If there is anybody who wished to speak, and I haven't picked up, could you just please let me know with a hand, probably this time? Councillor Parker. Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Talbot earlier asked about restrictions in places like Guildhall Street and Castle Square. Thank you, Christine, for taking an interest in my part of the world. We could have added, if we'd have wanted to, Brayford Wharf, all of which are great places to sit outside and drink. I was lifted by councillor Davies's response about the usual expectations of not causing obstruction, because that's pretty important for the reasons that have been mentioned. Councillor Wotton referred to them in detail, and so there is a no obstruction condition. We then moved on to the revoking of licences in extreme circumstances. I suppose I'm interested in the relationship between councils, because, yes, we have five councils that have signed up to accepting that the county would take over, five districts, but we've not heard about the other two. If a council, if one of our districts does decide to maintain the right for them to enforce, sorry, to issue licences, then the revoking by the county, and the county's responsible for the recognition that there is a breach of the no obstruction condition, those relationships need to be closed, don't they? And I would just welcome some comment about how that would work in those circumstances.
Councillor Davies.
Thank you. Well, I mean, we already enjoy a close working relationship on a practical level over issues like this across the county. The Act does limit, one of the few exceptions for the automatic granting of a licence is if you are impairing usual access to the highway. And I think it would become very clear, and that the reasonableness test must be met, and I would say as a highways office, sorry, a highways authority, we would be the final arbiter on that particular question as to whether the highway had been impeded. I would like to think we would never get to that stage, and that by and large, as we see already, when we have dozens of cafe pavement licences in operation on a yearly basis in the county, we seem to manage those particularly well. That said, there are occasionally fraught issues, but I don't think they're between us and our fellow councils. It tends to be between us and the applicants. So I'm sure with, again, using that awful phrase, a little bit of common sense, we can work in the same direction, notwithstanding the fact one of the few reasons to object to this is impeding of the highway.
Okay, thank you, councillor Davies. Thank you, councillor Parker. I'll move on now. Councillor Renshaw, I understand, has been indicating to speak. Apologies if I've missed you earlier, councillor Renshaw. Councillor Renshaw.
That's no problem, Chairman. You're still on your own plates.
Yes, I'm right.
Well, everything's, more or less, everything that needs to be said has been said. Narrow streets, narrow footways, they need safety management, everybody agrees with that. Not leaving the tackle out overnight when it should be put away, it obviously needs to be managed. And in essence, what it's down to is local councillor input is essential, and there needs to be a mechanism in place for that, because sometimes it is difficult to get through the normal procedures. And as Richard has alluded to, speed and communication is the essence for this success. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Renshaw. Councillor Linda Wotton, I understand, is indicated to speak.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Pepper already asked my question, and councillor Davies answered it. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Whittington. Councillor Whittington, did you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. My apologies for not having the video turned on. The broadband signal's a bit weak today, and if I put the video, it tends to not get... The question really to Richard, because broadly, I'm in agreement with this, and I think it's eminently sensible. I'm just thinking, and Richard knows marketplace in Grantham very well indeed, because on several occasions, we've had a drink, haven't we, Richard, outside a certain establishment there? My question is really around the late night nature of this. Would we take advice from the police in terms of, because obviously, in the early evening, very pleasant, sit outside. I'm just thinking about later at night, especially on a Friday, Saturday, if it gets rowdy and raucous, if you've got more and more street furniture out there making a noise, potentially a lot of street furniture in the wrong hands becomes weapons. Would we take advice from the police and from local residents around restricting the times of some of these licences if required? Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Whittington. Richard, councillor Davies.
Thank you. Other bars are available, of course, not just the ones in Grantham. You're right, councillor Whittington, and what we do, we do all this already, and one of the common factors with the cafe licences that we issue is that by a certain time in the evening, all the materials, the tables and chairs, barriers are removed, so they can't inadvertently become involved in any problems that do sometimes unfortunately happen within our market towns and city. I think that the Act doesn't require us for the cafe licence, I believe, to directly consult with the police on every occasion. I think that the Act doesn't require us for the cafe licence, I believe, to directly consult with the police on every occasion, although I appreciate that if a venue is looking to increase its alcohol licence, then as part of the local licensing authority's position, they would of course consult with the police. But I think in many, many occasions where we felt it was appropriate, I'm sure we would look to speak at the very least on an informal basis to the local police, just to see if there are any concerns. But I think it will become standard practice as it is now that all kind of tables, chairs and things will be put away at the end of the night before late.
Okay, then. Thank you, councillor Davies. And thank you, councillor Whittington. Right, I've got here that councillor Griggs and Oxbey have now joined the meeting and in fact joined quite a while ago, and just to confirm that we've got that noted when you joined. Is that correct, Nigel?
That's correct, Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And I've got one more indicating to speak, which is councillor Aaron. Councillor Aaron.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wondered, are the applications for fast tracking available at the moment? And if so, where from? Thank you.
Councillor Davies.
Yes, we will be inviting applicants to come via our website. The system is already in place to do that so that it's an online process which happens very rapidly. And I've just been pointed out to me in response to councillor Renshaw's point about consulting with local councillors, I would stress that because of the presumption in favour of the application, it is key. And I can see members who sit on planning committees who know that phrase all too well chuckling, that members do come back to us, to offices when asked for their views extremely quickly. Because if a day or two goes by, then I'm afraid you may have missed the opportunity to feed in on that.
Okay, thank you, councillor Davies. Thank you, councillor Aaron. I've got nobody else indicating to speak. If there is anybody that I've missed, could you please let me know in some way? With a hand probably this time. No? Right, so we move on then. Nigel West will now move to the vote. And Nigel West, the head of Democratic Services, will ask councillors to clearly state whether they are voting for, against or abstaining. Councillors' names will be read out alphabetically, and councillors are requested to respond by unmuting their microphones only and stating for, against or abstain. But having said all that, just before I do move on, I would give councillor Davies, and I think he's he's probably done it as we've gone along, the opportunity just to wrap up on that item. Councillor Davies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very quickly to say that I appreciate the feedback from members who've made at this meeting, and I will ensure they're fed into the system. And I think the key takeaways are that common sense is applied and the highway isn't obstructed, that local conditions are taken into account, and that when people are infringing on the licence they're given, that we don't turn a blind eye and we act upon it quickly. So thank you very much for the input, guys.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Over to you, Nigel.
Thank you, Chairman. As you said, I will read out councillors' names alphabetically and ask that councillors respond by unmuting their microphones and stating for, against or abstain. Councillor Adams.
For.
Councillor Aaron.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Austin.
For.
Councillor Bowles.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Bradwell.
For.
Councillor Brailsford.
For.
Councillor Brewis.
For.
Councillor Bridges.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Brockway.
For.
Councillor Brooks.
For.
Councillor Corey.
For.
Councillor Clark.
For.
Councillor Coopland.
For.
Councillor Davies.
For.
Councillor Dobson.
For.
Councillor Fleetwood.
For.
Councillor Foltz.
For.
Councillor Griggs.
For.
Councillor Grocock.
For.
Councillor Hagues.
For.
Councillor Hill.
For.
Councillor Kendrick.
For.
Councillor Key.
For.
For.
Councillor Kelly.
For.
Councillor Kirk, sorry. Councillor Macy.
For.
Councillor Marfleet.
For.
Councillor Matthews.
For.
Councillor McNally. Councillor Mrs. Newton.
For, sorry.
Councillor Mrs. Newton.
For.
Councillor Oxbey.
For.
Councillor Parker.
For.
Councillor Parkin.
For.
Councillor Pepper.
For.
Councillor Perrott and Williams.
For.
Councillor Pol.
For.
Councillor Reed, Christopher Reed.
For.
Councillor Robert Reed.
For.
Councillor Renshaw.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Sneed.
For.
Councillor Spencer. Sorry, apologies there. Councillor Stokes.
For.
Councillor Strangle.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Talbot.
For.
Councillor Thompson.
For.
Councillor Trollope Blue. Councillor Turner, are you present? Councillor Whittington.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Woolley.
For.
Councillor Linda Wotton.
For.
Councillor Ray Wotton.
For.
Councillor Young. Councillor Young.
For.
That's unanimous, Chairman. You're on mute, sir, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Nigel. We confirmed that the decision then, that is carried, the recommendation is carried, and it was a unanimous approval. Right, that brings us to the conclusion of the meeting. I would just like to thank everyone for making themselves available to attend this extraordinary meeting. Thank you, dear attendance, and good afternoon. Thank you. That's the end of the hour.
Bye bye.